All right, it is six fifteen. I'd like to call the July eighth, two thousand and twenty-five Kenton County Planning Commission Special Meeting to Order. Would you please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You'd remain standing for our invocation, please.
As we, the members of this commission, gather here today, we ask that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render service to our fellow citizens and to our community. Let us continue to strive to make a better world by always keeping in mind the enduring values of life, and let us exert our efforts in those areas upon which future generations can build with confidence. And let us keep in our prayers and thoughts the people in Texas during the floods. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Here.
Commissioner Burling?
Here.
Commissioner Bethel?
Here.
Commissioner Bridges?
Present.
Commissioner Darple?
Commissioner DeAngelis?
Here.
Commissioner Dunham?
Here.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Herman?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Farr?
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Simpson?
Commissioner Sketch?
Here.
Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn? We have a court.
All right. Nice attendance for July eighth. I was a little worried we might be running a little light on attendance, but this is great. For those in the audience, we have a brief video outlining our procedures for this evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Kenton County Planning Commission. Please listen carefully as we explain tonight's proceedings and how you may participate. For a written copy of these procedures, please refer to the Planning Commission's bylaws. Copies of that section can be found on the table at the back of the room. The Planning Commission's Chair will open each public hearing item by reading its description. Our staff will then present facts and make a recommendation based on their investigations. Commission members may then pose questions to clarify those facts and recommendations. The commission will then hear testimony from the applicant and the public. The applicant and those supporting the proposal will speak first. Those opposed and those who are neutral or who have questions will then be given the opportunity to speak. If you wish to have the option to speak, you must have registered by signing up at the back table. You can decide later if you want to speak. The Chair will poll the audience for anyone wishing to speak on the matter. Only those persons who have registered to speak will be allowed to do so. When the Chair calls your name, please come forward to the lectern and state your name, address, and affiliation. If you're part of a group, please consider having a spokesperson speak on your behalf. Once a point has been made by a speaker, it is not necessary to state it again multiple times. Stating that you are in agreement with the previous speaker's opinion is sufficient. Finally, speak into the microphone. This meeting is being recorded for broadcast on cable TV, so speaking clearly will help us hear you and guarantee that your comments are part of the record. Our Chair will then provide the applicant and opponents time to rebut any comments, address concerns, and answer any questions. The Planning Commission will recess then for discussion. This gives members time to decide if they have what they need to make an informed decision. While this is an open discussion for all to hear, questions or comments from the audience will not be permitted while the public hearing is in recess. When members end their recess and reopen the hearing, they may ask for clarifications from staff or anyone who gave testimony. They will then close the public hearing and proceed towards a motion, a second, and a vote. Subdivision and waiver decisions are final and go no further. Text and map amendment decisions become recommendations that are sent on to elected officials in the jurisdiction where the site is located. These elected officials have the final say in zoning matters. Feel free to leave once the item in which you are interested has been heard. Items on tonight's agenda were advertised as required by law. Our staff posted a sign on the site and sent notices to property owners when required by state and local law. You do not have to have received one of these notices to speak. Everyone's comments are welcomed. Before we begin, please keep these rules in mind. There are two exits from this room. One is located at the rear of the room. The other is located in the alcove ahead and to your right. Under normal circumstances, please leave the room by the door through which you entered. Fire codes prohibit blocking these doors or the aisles. Please keep these areas clear of chairs and any belongings you may have brought with you. In an emergency, please use whichever exit is closest and use the stairwell outside this room to exit the building. Restrooms and a drinking fountain are available directly adjacent to the elevators. Smoking is not permitted in the building. Food and drinks are not permitted in the public section of this room. Please turn off your cellphone or set it to vibrate so as not to interrupt our proceedings. Thank you for joining us this evening. This process works because citizens like you step up and participate. If you have questions about our processes or issues heard this evening, please do not hesitate to contact our staff here at PDS.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, you have in front of you tonight's agenda. I'll note that the Ludlow text amendment, they've requested to table that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the tabling of the Ludlow text amendment for up to six months?
I'll make a motion with the changes.
Second.
First by Commissioner Snyder, second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. You have in front of you the revised May first, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes. Any issues with the minutes as revised? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve those. First by Commissioner Bridges.
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeAngelis. Is that who that was? Yep. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Abstain.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Abstain.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burling?
Abstain.
Commissioner Bethel?
Abstain.
They are approved.
All right. You also have in front of you the June fifth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes. Any revisions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the June fifth minutes. So moved first by Commissioner Bridges?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wickman. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis?
Abstain.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Abstain.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
All right. Commissioners, you have in front of you the receipts and expenditures. This is for the month of May. Any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve the receipts and expenditures?
First by Commissioner Snyder, or Ryan, second by Commissioner Snyder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. You have the report of last month's actions by staff, including subdivision plans and stage two updates. Any questions? We have the report of last month's actions by our legislative bodies, and both of those items, we recommended approval, and both were approved. Brings us to the public hearing portion of our agenda. The first item is file number PC dash twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-seven dash MA, Erlanger map amendment. The applicant is Daniel Woodward on behalf of Jerome E. Hinky. The location is thirty-two oh eight Dixie Highway in Erlanger. The request is a proposed map amendment to the Erlanger zoning ordinance changing the property from CC, Community Commercial, to GI, General Industrial. The property contains an existing legal non-conforming use, medical cannabis cultivation. The applicant proposes this map amendment to bring the site into conformity with the permitted uses.
So, thank you for the record. My name is Cody Sheets with PDS staff. As stated, the applicant is proposing a map amendment to the Erlanger zoning ordinance, changing the property from CC, Community Commercial, to GI, General Industrial. The property contains an existing legal non-conforming use. The applicant proposes this map amendment to bring the site into conformity with the permitted uses. The site is located in the first ring suburban subarea of the Kenton County Comprehensive Plan. It's approximately one point two six acres and is located on the north side of Dixie Highway and south of the railroad. A private access drive known as Burley Drive connects the site with Dixie Highway. The property's previous use was a legal non-conforming industrial use, and the existing building is approximately nineteen thousand one hundred and five square feet. This is an image from June two thousand and twenty-five looking southwest down Dixie Highway from the entrance at Burley Drive. This is an image from that same time period at the bottom of Burley Drive looking northwest. Here we have an image from the top of Burley Drive looking into the parking lot of the existing building. This is looking at the building and the parking area as well as the loading area. And here we have a view of the existing use. A little bit of history. In two thousand and twenty-one, the city of Erlanger adopted a new zoning ordinance, which included a new zoning text, uh, new zoning map. The subject property was previously zoned IP one, which permitted a mix of manufacturing offices and warehousing. The new zoning map designated the area as CC or Community Commercial. This is a map of the previous zoning. The IP one area is highlighted in blue, and the existing parcel is marked by the yellow star. You can see on the right, a little bit closer view, where it is zoned industrial. And here we have the new zoning ordinance. You can see the area that was previously zoned IP one is now GI, except for the parcel in question, which has been changed to CC or Community Commercial. So on July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation on a proposed text amendment from the city of Erlanger for medical cannabis uses. On September third, two thousand and twenty-four, the city of Erlanger passed an ordinance amending the Erlanger zoning ordinance to allow medical cannabis cultivation, processing, producing, and safety compliance facilities as permitted uses. On May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Erlanger Board of Adjustment approved a request for a change of non-conforming use on the site in question to change from light fabrication to medical cannabis cultivation. This action allowed the site, allowed the applicant to move forward with establishing a medical cannabis cultivation facility as in legal non-conforming use. And the current zoning is again CC, and the surrounding area is CC, GI, and FI, which stands for Flex Industrial. The existing land use is industrial, and the surrounding area is primarily commercial as well as railroad to the north. Dixie Highway is classified as an urban minor arterial. Burley Drive is a private access road. There are sidewalks on both sides of Dixie Highway, and a tank route does run along Dixie Highway. The CC zone is meant for large footprint retail uses as well as smaller outlets or strip centers. The GI zone is intended to provide locations for manufacturing, research and development, warehouse and flex space. This was a site plan which was submitted by the applicant. In purple, we see a proposed fence. In tan, we see the existing building. In yellow, we see the proposed staff parking spaces. In green, we see visitor parking spaces. There will be two ADA spaces, as well as existing and proposed loading areas. So staff did conduct a full review of the comprehensive plan, and we do find areas of consistency. We do find that the proposed map amendment will help support a new business by bringing it into conformity and ensuring that the underlying zoning better reflects the existing land use. This will help to alleviate some of the restrictions associated with being a legal non-conforming use. And we do find the map amendment to be consistent with the recommended land use, which does identify the area as industrial. The site does not contain any DSA or Blue Line streams. KRS one hundred point two one three states that a map amendment must be in agreement with the comprehensive plan, or that the existing zoning classification is inappropriate, or that there have been major changes that were not anticipated in the adopted plan. Staff is giving a favorable recommendation on the map amendment, changing the site from CC to GI to bring the site into conformity. We do find that the existing non-conforming site feature, I'm sorry, conformity with the permitted use subject to the applicant agreeing to the following conditions. Existing non-conforming site features regarding off-street parking, required landscaping and character standards are remedied to the maximum extent possible. The proposed map amendment, as conditioned, is generally in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. The existing zone classification given to the property is inappropriate, and the proposed zone classification is appropriate. The original zoning classification in the previous zoning map was IP one, which was an industrial zone, but was changed to CC, a commercial zone, with the adoption of the Z twenty-one ordinance. The previous use and the current use are industrial, and the recommended land use is industrial as well. The proposed map amendment will prevent potential difficulties associated with running a non-conforming business, such as a restriction on expansion and certain restrictions on structural alterations. If the zone change is granted, all other non-conformities, such as site and design features, must be remedied to the maximum extent practicable as a condition of approval. If approved, the following non-conformity shall be, should be remedied. Sufficient information should be submitted with permits to determine compliance. Off-street parking areas should be adequately surfaced and striped with parking spaces that meet dimensional requirements and design. And the applicant will speak a little bit further to the dumpster in question. And a little bit of additional information, Table seven point three in the Erlanger zoning ordinance states the allowable fence types, heights, and locations. The applicant has not provided details on the proposed fence, but they will need to follow the permitted fence types. Otherwise, they will require a Board of Adjustment hearing. And also, medical cannabis facilities are regulated and licensed by the state, so there are requirements with those which they will have to abide by. And I'd be more than happy to take any questions.
All right. I will confirm with the applicant, but have you discussed the conditions with the applicant?
We have.
And did they indicate that they were okay with that, or?
They did.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Sheets?
Do you know when this, when they moved into this facility? Was it two thousand and twenty-four?
I think the applicant will be a little bit better able to speak to that.
And do you know if it's strictly a cultivation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Okay, signed up to speak, I have Daniel Woodward, Jerry Hinky, and Mark Collier. All four. Would Mr. Woodward like to start or kick it off? State your name and address for the record, please.
Daniel Woodward, representing thirty-two oh eight Dixie Highway. Just don't have a lot to present. Just wanted to introduce myself and welcome your questions, of course. The question about the dumpster, the dumpster in question was noted by the staff, is actually the neighbors, the Amco facility. Other than that, you know, we've, we've had good interactions with Mark Collier and Mayor Fetti as we've gone through the process of the non-conforming use, and good working with Jerry as far as getting this going. But mainly, I'm here to answer questions as needed.
So you heard the conditions that staff was proposing. You're agreeable to those conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Woodward?
Would you say the dumpster, the neighbor's dumpster, you saying it's on your property?
It's that properly, it's, it sits right on that edge. I would say that it, Jerry will be better to answer that. He's the owner, I'm the leasing.
Any other questions? Mr. Ryan?
When did you start business?
We have not started.
Okay.
He's been in the building for a few years, but we've not, we've not moved forward yet with construction.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Mr. Hinky? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Jerry Hinky, nine five two Woodchuck, Villa Hills, Kentucky. So, I don't have much to add to that, other than regarding the dumpster. So, Amco property, the dumpster actually sits on his property, but the truck that comes up to get it accesses it on our driveway. So, we had brainstormed a little bit with the owner, Fred, and we haven't come to a conclusion yet, but he's got to find a way to navigate all the cars he's got on his lot to make that work. You know, we've been accommodating up until this point. We're glad to help however we can, but, you know, there has to be, you know, security gates, and that's going to be like a rolling fence of some sort, I believe. So, they're going to have to figure something out, as much as we'd like to help. And he understands, too, that there needs to be some sort of barrier or door closure or something, so he can't see it from the street.
And I guess I'll ask you, as the property owner, you're okay with the conditions for this part of that?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, good. Any other, any questions for Mr. Hinky? All right, thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
Mr. Collier?
Thank you, Chairman. Not a whole lot to add. Just want to speak a little bit to the conditions of the property. We have spoken with both the property owner and the tenant, making sure that they're very clear. To bring this up to standard and above so would be the city's perspective on that. They have done that proactively even before this meeting, so just wanted to speak to that. We do feel like this is going to be an improvement to the property and bring additional revenue to the city.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Collier? Thanks for being here. Okay, that's all I have. Signed up to talk. We'll recess the public hearing for discussion among commissioners. Seems pretty straightforward. No issues? All right. Hearing none, we'll return to the public hearing. Any clarifications needed of staff or others? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion. Our Erlanger rep, Mr. Herman, would you, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. So I'd like to make a following motion in reference to PC dash two-five dash zero-zero-seven dash MA in regards to proposed map amendment to the Erlanger zoning ordinance changing the property from CC or Community Commercial to GI, General Industrial. I am falling in favor based on the facts and considerations constrained in the staff report, and find the proposed text amendment to be reasonable guidelines.
Uh, map amendment. Right?
Was it text?
Oh, it was a map. I'll add, yep. So, I'd like to make the following motion with reference to file number PC dash two-five dash zero-zero-seven dash MA in the subject matter of the proposed, or the property, proposed map amendment to the Erlanger zoning ordinance changing the property from CC, Community Commercial, to GI, General Industrial. I find that the request moved to approve the map amendment based on the facts and considerations contained in the staff report and based on the testimony of staff and witnesses present at the public hearing and finding that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. With the conditions? With the conditions that the, the staff has set forth. Okay, great. All right.
I'll second.
Second, goodbye, Commissioner Martin. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
I have a point of clarification. I came in slightly late for the presentation. I am a yes, but if it is preferable for me to abstain, I'm happy to do that.
I think you came right in at the beginning of the public hearing, so I think you're available to debate.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Abstain.
Okay, the motion is approved.
All right. Good luck with the project. Thanks for being here. Okay, our next item of business is file number PC dash twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-six dash TX, Crestview Hills text amendment. The applicant is the city of Crestview Hills, Herr Paul Meyer, mayor. The request is the city of Crestview Hills seeks to replace the current zoning ordinance with a new zoning ordinance that recognizes Crestview Hills' development patterns, streamlines processes, and addresses new development trends. A link to the full draft text and proposed zoning map can be found at HTTPS forward slash KCPCKY.org forward slash meetings forward slash now hyphen pending. All right.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And for the record, my name is Patrick Denbo, Senior Planner with PDS staff, and we are pleased to present to you the Crestview Hills Z twenty-one ordinance. So first, we do want to acknowledge and thank the Z twenty-one work group. Staff met with the working group on and off over the past two and a half years, tailoring the process. The first meeting was in April of two thousand and twenty-three. The working group was regularly checking to see how their original, or I'm sorry, how their neighboring jurisdictions were making decisions and taking that into account when making their decisions. And then staff presented the draft ordinance to the city council on June twelfth. So a major part of simplifying the ordinances and creating a more user-friendly document is the reduction in the amount of zoning districts. So like many other cities, new zoning districts had been added over the years, many of which didn't have, you know, much differences from one another. So the proposed ordinance will reduce the number of zoning districts from sixteen to thirteen total zones. This reduction is reflected in the proposed zoning map of the city, and we'll go into some more detail on that. It's important to note that although the names of the zoning districts may change, areas that are currently zoned single-family will remain that. Areas that are mixed-use or commercial will still be mixed-use or commercial. There are five proposed residential zoning districts within the city. The RLLS, which is the residential large lot subdivision, is the area in the light yellow on the map. This makes up the majority of the residential areas of the city, and these are your low-density, single-family districts. The RCPS, which is the compact subdivision, is the area located right in the center of the map. This is around Campus Drive, and these are your single-family residential zones that are on smaller lots. The RCVS, which is the conventional subdivision, is the bright yellow section. This is a single-family zone of medium lot sizes. The residential mixed zone allows for a combination of single-family attached, single-family detached, and multifamily, and this is in the area of Palmer Court, Champions Way, and Nicholas Lane. And the RMF, which is the multifamily zone, is represented by the light brown color to the right of the screen, and this is the area of Tuscany Valley, Rhine Valley, Napa Valley. This does allow for a combination of single-family attached and detached, multifamily, two-family, as well as three and four-family. There are two commercial districts. The HLC is the historic commercial zone. This is a direct transfer from their existing ordinance, and this is an area that's off of Mansion Place, right at Dixie Highway, just kind of north of the intersection of two seventy-five. At the CC zone, which is the Community Commercial Zone, this is the current shopping center area of Crestview Hills Town Center. The employment zoning districts will include the BP one and BP two as, and the, the Flex Industrial Zones, BP meaning Business Park. Business Park one is the existing, is, is an existing professional office zone, Research Park is what it's called. And this area allows for high-rise buildings. This is light purple on the map. And then the Business Park two is the existing Professional Office one zone, and this area allows for low-rise buildings, and this is shown on the map in the middle of the screen in the medium shade of purple. The Flex Industrial is the light gray The Flex Industrial is the light gray area located in the most northwest area of the city. The intent of this zone is to provide a location for light manufacturing, assembly, research, and development. Conservation Zone remains the same, it's the dark green area over to the eastern part of the city, and the Institutional Zone is the purple area that is mostly Thomas More University. Plan Unit Development is the blue here on the map, and this includes Crown Point Circle. So the MX Zone, which is the Mixed Use Zone, this is another zoning district that is a carryover from their existing zone. It is in the, it is in the ordinance, but it is not yet mapped, and it will not be mapped on this version either. This is, again, a direct transfer. The intent of this zone is to support appropriately scaled redevelopment into two areas for mixed use. The two areas are intended to have a live-work-play atmosphere with a mix of high-quality building and civic spaces, and well-designed landscape and streetscapes. So the MX One area is intended for, this would be the, the town center itself, and the MX Two area is intended to be office park locations, also surrounding the, the town center area. Just highlighting some new uses, so accessory dwelling units will be permitted within the single-family zones and the residential mixed zone. That is, if the lot is greater than five thousand square feet. So the ADUs are permitted, but they have to be attached to the primary structure, so no detached. Short-term rentals will be prohibited. Family childcare homes will be conditional in all residential zones. Accessory structures will change from one hundred square feet to one hundred and twenty square feet within residential zones. And in the CC Zone, drive-throughs will be a conditional use, but only with freestanding buildings. The city chose to allow the recommended changes for permitted encroachments. This is in regarding front porches and rear yard decks being allowed to extend a little bit into the, the setback requirements. And the working group also chose to allow the ten percent standard modification that the zoning administrator can make. There will be building material standards for the CC Zone on new construction, as well as the single-family zones for single-family detached properties. The fence section was reorganized and reformatted into the new table. Article Eight will include everything except for the optional sections of view shed protection, stream and water quality buffers, and green development, infill and grayfield development. So it will still include hillside development standards, flood protection, stormwater management, odor, noise, dust, vibration. Parking standards are updated per the consultant recommendations, which generally reduces the parking requirements. The working group elected to allow for parking flexibility through off-street parking credits, as well as allowing traffic impact studies as a flexibility option if the applicant establishes that they require a cer, a smaller demand than was typically required. Sign ordinance is staying the same, it's just reformatting to the new chart to be user-friendly, and the working group chose to allow murals within the institutional and CC Zone. The city has opted for the standard process for map amendments, so not the twenty-one day rule. They will not be allowing concurrent variances in conditional uses with map amendments, choosing to keep those with the local board of adjustment. Final development plans will be reviewed by city staff, but final decision will be made by the city administrator. And the city administrator will have the authority to decide if an amendment to an approved plan is major or minor. So staff did review this with the comprehensive plan, so Crestview Hills is a mostly built-out community with a few opportunities for new development. The new zoning ordinance places emphasis on maintaining the existing character of its neighborhoods through design standards and revised development standards to remove barriers for existing homeowners. When new development does occur, it's important that it meets the city's long-term goals. Staff is providing a favorable recommendation, the new Crestview Hills zoning ordinance and text and map meets the requirements of KRS. The city is authorized to enact permanent land use regulations and other kinds of growth management, regulations to promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the planning unit, to facilitate orderly and harmonious development and the visual or historical character of the unit, and to regulate the density of population and intensity of land use in order to provide for adequate light and air. The new Crestview Hills zoning ordinance text and map is generally consistent with the recommended, or I'm sorry, with the Kent County Conference of Plan, as well as with the recommended land use map. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, nice, nice work. Any questions for Mr. Denbo?
Mr. Denbo, the design standards for single-family are only if there's new construction?
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Okay, I have signed up to speak, Mayor Paul Meyer and City Administrator Alex Manningly. Both four, not surprisingly.
I don't want to go through this again, so I'm for it. First of all, I want to thank Planning Commission, the staff of PDS for helping us through this process. It was a long process, we had nine people, part of our committee included residents, included council members, of course, Margot was part of that committee. So we appreciate all the work everybody did on this. But I think it's good for our city, we made some adjustments. One of the things that, for our outbuildings or accessory uses, we went from a hundred square feet to a hundred and twenty square feet, which is not a big thing, but it was for some people who want to build, put outbuildings or accessory buildings in. So we appreciate your consideration on this, thank you.
All right, any questions from Mayor?
Come on, Todd, you gotta add something.
Off the hook today.
Mr. Manningly, nothing to add, all right, thanks for being here. Let's see, let's recess the public hearing for discussion among commissioners. Yeah?
I would say it's part of the working group led by Mayor Meyer and Administrator Alex and, and staff was really great to be a part of. We really thought about how do we streamline and condense the amount of zones that we had in a way that made sense. We really looked at things, what do we want to fix current problems and issues? And how would we really want our city to be set up for future, so we were really trying to think ahead. We made sure that we thought about the, the residents of the city, and where we can make things a little bit easier for them, and clear up some of that red tape we did. And then also, I was excited to see that we were able to take some of the recommendations from others, E21, and what other cities had done to see kind of streamline throughout. So, really long process, happy that it's over, but I'm excited to have the plan come to life.
Okay, thanks for your work on that. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, the, this chair of the Z21 Committee, we did consider this and go through this, and did give it a favorable recommendation to the entire commission.
Well, good, let's return to the public hearing, any clarifications needed of staff or the applicant? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Baumgartner?
Sure, so PC twenty five zero 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 six TX, I am going to recommend a favorable, a favorable recommendation to move, to approve the text amendment based on the facts and considerations contained in the staff report, and based on the testimony of staff and witnesses present at the public hearing, and further finding the proposed text amendment is, has reasonable regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner France, Mr. Smith, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Wegman?
Yes.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner De Angelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yes.
And the motion is approved.
All right. Congratulations, thank you all.
Thank you, Kevin and I.
And you too, thank you. All right, that's all I have for public hearings. Reports from committees, direction twenty thirty implementation. Mr. Simpson indicated he wasn't going to be able to be here, but does anyone have anything to add on implementation?
I don't believe we met since the latest meeting.
Executive, we have not met, the one thing I'll say is we have two vacancies, one is Lakeside Park in Elsmere. I've been communicating with representatives from both, trying to encourage them to provide names. I mean, we're at a point now where we could appoint and fill it, but we like to work with the city and, and, you know, not dictate who their representative is, if they've got someone. I'm happy to say that Lakeside Park is, at their meeting last night, the City Council approved the appointment of Kenneth Heidrich. We're outside the sixty days, so we'll, at our next meeting, when he arrives, we'll ratify that. But that's good, and hopefully Elsmere will have a rep soon to follow. Subdivision review. Anything? Nope, not hearing any.
You didn't meet.
Z21, anything else to add, who we have in the pipeline coming?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Reports from commission members. Reports from legal counsel?
That's your report.
And any reports or announcements from staff?
So first, I am pleased to introduce to you Steve Nelker, who is our new Director of Infrastructure Engineering, and he stuck around for the meeting, and if you want to say anything to the commission?
Like you said, I'm Steve Nelker, I'm new director of infrastructure, started about two and a half weeks ago, so still fresh, so be nice to me. But, on that, if there's any questions, if not, I'll be here as much as possible, and especially when we're coming.
Well, we're excited to have you, it's an important role, and we appreciate your expertise, and looking forward to working with you.
Excited to be here.
Yeah.
Just like to add, I have the privilege of working with Steve professionally on, with Geotechnology Associates, so he's very capable and qualified with professional engineering and soils engineering, and it's, it's been a pleasure. I'm glad you're on board with Stan.
Is this a replacement for Ms. Tinfeld?
Yes.
Let's see, any other announcements?
Yes, I'm sorry, so while we're introducing people, I do want to introduce everyone also to our current intern, Sean Johnson, with the University of Cincinnati. And if you saw the cameras that are positioned around, we're getting new stock footage for a new intro video that we're going to be working on with, with the interns as well, and if you want to just pass over.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Sean Johnson, I am a fourth year at the University of Cincinnati, and I'm interning here over the summer. Thank you guys for having me.
What's your, what are you majoring in?
Urban planning.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, we do have just a couple more things, so we do want to briefly update you on some legislative issues. So, House Bill one sixty has passed, and this deals with qualified manufactured homes. What this bill is do, will, or is stating is that qualified manufactured homes will not be able to be distinguished from traditional single-family homes within the zoning ordinances moving forward. This will be effective July first, twenty twenty-six, so there's some time for any needed changes. So staff is currently reviewing all of the ordinance, and changes will, will come as needed on that. Any, any questions there? And with that, I'm actually going to hand it over to Pamela, she has an update to the continuing education requirements.
Hi, good evening, just for the record, my name is Pamela Bushelman, and I am the Senior Secretary for the Planning and Zoning and Planning and Development, and your, your commission secretary now. I'm going to talk to you today about the, just briefly, about the new KRS one hundred point three four six that went into effect just a couple of weeks ago, on June the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and it has to do with new continuing education guidelines and requirements. So up until now, or up until that change, we had been under KRS one forty-seven A point oh two seven, and that was repealed with House Bill three twenty-one, and they created KRS one hundred three four six specifically to go under KRS one hundred for us. The first requirement is for planning commissioners and board of adjustment members. Your new orientation hour requirement will be, you'll still have to, you'll still have to have four year, four hours, but you'll need three hours that are planning-related, and one that is specific to planning and zoning impact on housing and accessibility. You do, however, now have one year prior or one year following to get that done, it's no longer one hundred and twenty days for you. For planners, for the ongoing obligation, it's going to be every four years. So it's not the two-year obligation anymore. However, you still have to have eight hours, seven that are planning-related, and one that is specific to the housing supply and accessibility impacts. Some of the requirements have also changed for planning professionals, zoning administrators, deputies and assistants. Their orientation hours are still within the one hundred and twenty days. The only thing that changes for them is their eight hours that are required, seven for planning-related, and one specifically to housing, supply, and accessibility. And their obligation is the same thing, they're still every two years, sixteen hours, fifteen hours being planning-related, one hour on the impact of planning and zoning on housing accessibility and supply. So, just to keep in mind, for your orientation hour credits, prior to your, hours that you accumulate prior to your appointment or date of hire, do not apply to your ongoing obligation, I know this is, it's confusing. Hours that you accumulate after, during your orientation period, so the first year of your orientation period, any hours after that, those do apply to your first four years. So I've gone through, everybody should have gotten their CE report, and you'll see a little bit of a shift based on these new, these new deadlines when they're due, and your new obligation timing. It's important to note that continuing education must be submitted within thirty days of you taking your training, your course, whatever it happens to be. I can't accept hours taken in July that are submitted to me in December. They, they won't, I can't do it. And just keep in mind as well that you cannot duplicate your continuing education hours in the same term. There may be a few little tweaks for like House Bill fifty-five, if you go every year, some people do. House Bill fifty-five is different pretty much every year, but other than that, there's, I, I think there's maybe only one or two more.
So on that point, so if, if it's the same exact course, or what is a duplicate CE hour?
If, if it's the same course. Some people, they'll take one and, you know, in four years or two years, they don't realize that they've watched it before, and they submit it.
Okay.
Gotcha. So just, just to keep that in mind, submitting your CE hours, and you can always go back to your, if you ever need a copy of what you have submitted, let me know, because it's on your list. Everything that I, that I have from you from twenty twenty-one moving forward is everything that you submitted, and it's on your CE reports. You can submit these CE hours, the online form is the easiest, especially if you're watching something online. Just open another browser and go to the KCPC website, and it's right there, it's a little click and form you fill out. The only thing that's different on that The only thing that's different on that form now is it does give you specifically in there to, to check if you're submitting a credit for your housing requirement that's on there now. So that's the only thing that's really changed from that. You can still enter four different trainings. You can still upload attachments.
How will we know what qualifies for that power housing?
It, well, it, it has to be specifically, that's the language. It has to be specific to the impact of planning and zoning policies and procedures on housing supply and accessibility. That's straight out of KRS.
Or are you going to flag some for us?
I will. I'm actually in the process, in the process now of trying to categorize all of those. There's more than 100 hours of CE that's been accumulated in just the training videos that we've put out in Key Connection, and just going through all of those and trying to categorize them is going to take a little bit of time. So they will be segregated ongoing once you get finished? Yes, and now the Key Connection, I can probably even jump over to that. So the Key Connection now is now, in the past, we had four hours of continuing education on it, a minimum of four hours for every issue. Now we're adding the two hours of acceptable housing impact training as well. So you'll have, you'll still get the four hours of planning-related, but now you're going to get additionally two hours that are specifically planning-related to housing impact. This is, this is how we help you meet your requirements with the Key Connection. There's additional links to training resources, such as the APA or Kentucky Legal Cities, who have discounts available to members since 2020, more than 100 hours of CE. You can go to the Continuing Education and Forms webpage and click on the Key Connection training links for officials, and that's everything that I have made available since 2020 in the Key Connection newsletters. We also have a traditional library onsite here at PDS that has hard copy materials. If there's something that you're interested in, let me know. I'll see what I can find, and you're always welcome to come in and just look through the shelves. There is a list. KRS does provide a list of approved topics for continuing education. That is in KRS, I believe it's Section 8, and it's just a direct transfer. It hasn't changed from KRS 147A. Compliance has not changed. It is a direct transfer as well. Planning commissioners can be subject to removal per KRS 100.157, and BOA members per KRS 102.217. City employees are, no city, county, urban government, anyone under that heading can employ or hire professional staff as planners who do not complete, maintain, or submit their continuing education hours. So that's important to know. How to interpret your CE report? Everybody's going to, going to ask this, and I chose this one, but, so the red box there on the left, that's just your personal information, your name, your jurisdiction, the position you're on, what board you're on, your appointment date, and your expiration date are in there. The heading at the top is more for me. That just tells me what report I'm sending out. Highlighted in yellow are your due dates. And like I said, those have shifted. So you may have something like, in this case, in 2025 that was due. There were eight hours of CE that were due. There was no housing element required during that time. That's why that, that's blacked out. They turned in eight hours, so they don't owe any hours. If, if it's 200 hours that have been turned in, that due hours will just still be zero. Once you meet that eight or your required amount, it'll just go to zero and gray. If you want to turn in more, that's up to you. And then it'll go down for two more reporting periods in there. Some of you did have, may have, I sent out more than 120 CE reports in the last few days. Some, some of you did, based on the way things shifted with reporting, did have a housing element credit within their, their reporting. So I, that little blurb there is just a little flag of where I used it. Moving forward, you'll have to let me know that you've used one, but it'll, it'll say that, and it's in gold and black as well. And that's all I have. You can always call and, and ask questions. I'm happy to help.
Pam, you changed the header from pluses and minuses to?
I did. There, there, they are no more.
Good, thank you.
They live no more.
It's only been a 10-year project, Mike, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
Yeah, Pam, is the appointment, the initial appointment?
It's the most recent one that I was provided in 2021. I didn't start taking these over.
Okay, I guess my question is, is when we get reappointed, I think I was just reappointed.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's based on your initial appointment. Yes, yes, I understand what you're saying now. Yes, based on your initial appointment date, not your reappointment date.
Okay, thank you.
That's for the orientation aspect?
The orientation, yes, everything.
I mean, so?
And I was asking that because it says you can't take something prior to the next term. So, so if I take something and then get reappointed, it's still going to count?
Yes, yes. Reappointment is a non-issue. It's just your appointment date.
Okay.
Your original appointment date, yes.
For the orientation. You don't have to do it for reappointment, correct?
No, you don't have to do orientation for reappointment, no. No, you do not.
But it's for all purposes, not just the orientation hours.
Right, correct.
All right. That was a great question. Well, thanks for doing that. That's helpful. It's a good reminder.
Thank you.
No problem. And I, you guys all have a cheat sheet that I, that I printed out with all those updates.
Any other announcements? Yeah?
I just wanted to add about the implementation committee. I'm meeting with Andy and Megan next week at my office, just to like show them and everything. And I confirmed with my broker that I can export those reports to them.
All right, great. Thanks for your help on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Wow. 7:12, pretty speedy.
What are we going to do?
We have general correspondence. Boone County Plan 2045, Notice of Public Engagement. You all should have seen that in your packet. But if not, they have upcoming in-person engagement opportunities. There was one yesterday, and there's one also on the 17th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Boone County Public Library, the Walton Branch, at 13,000 Town Center Drive, Walton, Kentucky. Any new business? Any public comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.